Good evening to San Dimas City Council Meeting. It comes to order. And the successor agency pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March 17, 2020, the City Council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make the meeting accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of the City Councilmen or the public for this City Council meetings are waived. Madam City Clerk, would you read the role?
Councilmember Bertone?
Here.
Councilmember Ebner?
Here.
Councilmember Ebner?
Here.
Councilmember Vienna?
Here.
Councilmember Weber?
Here.
Mayor Bedar?
Here.
The record will show all council members are in attendance.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a proclamation tonight recognizing Black History Month. Whereas each February, Black History Month is recognized nationally and serves as a time of honor and a compliment of Black Americans in every area of their history. San Dimas recognizes the many contributions that African-Americans, of African-Americans to our country, and is proud to reinforce our commitment to be a nation of opportunity and hope for every citizen and whereas this observance acknowledges both past and present African and African-American whose inspiring courage sacrificed relentless efforts and sought to improve the quality of life for all in the name of justice, honor, and freedom for all. And whereas during this time of commemoration and reflection, it is proper to recognize and congratulate all the programs, partnerships, activities, and events that are taking place throughout the county of Los Angeles and the nation in observance of Black History Month. Therefore, I, Emmett Bedar, Mayor of the City of San Dimas, Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Bertone, Councilmember John Ebner, Ryan Vienna, and Eric Weber do hereby proclaim February 21, 2021, as Black History Month in San Dimas and recommend this celebration to all of our citizens. And witness thereof, I, Emmett Bedar, hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of San Dimas to be affixed this ninth day of February 2021. Oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item in the agenda or not the agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearings items will be considered when the item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking or engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. At this time, I'm going to read some procedures for public comment. There will be four options for members of the public to participate during oral communications. There would be one oral communication period at the beginning of the meeting for the public to comment on any item on or off the agenda. Each speaker will have one three-minute opportunity to make their comments. At the two-minute mark, staff will announce one minute remains. Public comments will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for the public comment will be taken separately for public hearing agenda items. Written comments, public comments will be taken in the following order. Written comments received by email before four o'clock will be provided to the council, posted on the website, acknowledged by name and topic, and added to the permanent record. In-person participants. Current order provides that only 15 people are allowed in any one room. Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public will not exceed the 15-person requirement in the council chambers. A speaker card will be required to facilitate and track the number of participants in the council chambers. If you do not wish to list your name, you may identify as Speaker One or your number in the queue. The cards will be presented to the city clerk who will call the speaker to the podium and order the cards be submitted. Once three minutes has expired, speakers must exit the chamber using the double doors to the right of the podium and exit City Hall. Staff will be in the lobby monitoring the number of attendees and ushering the speakers into the chambers when space permits. Phone participants may call 909-394-6206 before the closure of the public comment period. Public comments may be submitted by logging onto the meeting through Zoom link shown on the council agenda. Meeting ID is 909-394-6200. Passcode is 949949. Or you may dial in at +1-213-338-8477, Los Angeles. Normal public hearings will follow the normal procedures or protocols. Madam Clerk, is there any written comments?
Mayor, there was one email that was submitted on the first of February. It was sent to all of the council members. It has been posted on the website, and it will be added to the permanent record. That email was from Jonathan Hawes asking for council support of a process to, what is it? A process involving bringing to light, what is it? Misdeeds that are done by city government workers. It is an email that has gone out to all cities from what our city attorney has told me. And no action is requested at this time.
And that's the only one that we've received?
That's the only email that was received for this meeting.
Okay. I just, I must ask, earlier today, we received, I received, and it looked like to me, the entire council received either a text or a email from a Janine Brumer.
That went to, it didn't come, I, it wasn't sent as a public comment. I didn't understand. It went to council and other staff members, and then it was forwarded to me.
Okay, thank you.
What I understand as part of a public record, but from what I understand, it was not sent. Again, it didn't come through public comment email, and it didn't come to the city clerk email.
And for clarification, it was an email, not a text.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk, City Clerk. Okay. Are there any in-person speakers? I'm being informed there are no in-person speakers. Are there any phone speakers?
Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, it's Gary Enderly. It's now been 119 days since one city employee has been put on administrative leave while still collecting his full pay and benefits. It's been 114 days since another city employee has been on administrative leave and still collecting full pay and benefits. That's approximately a total of $127,000, again, $127,000 that the taxpayers of San Dimas has paid out to these two employees without one day at work. This doesn't include the thousands of dollars in surfees that the city has incurred, which of course is the taxpayers' expense. Now, one of these employees has filed a $900,000 claim against the City of San Dimas. What does that say about how the city has handled this matter? I see in some cases, you keep employees on while they're under investigations, but in these two cases, you relieve them of their responsibilities while under investigation. I'd like to see a copy of the city's policy on how these matters are supposed to be handled. Maybe that's something that the city manager can provide me with. With that said, I'd also like to thank the council for recognizing Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have three more.
Okay. Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Diane. Good evening, City Council. First and foremost, like I said, my name is Diane, and I'm a resident of the City of San Dimas, and I also work here in town. I wanted to take a moment to commend the City Council, specifically Mayor Bedar, Mayor Pro Tem Bertone, Councilmember Vienna, and Councilmember Weber. I want to commend you on taking back control of the City Council meetings. For months, I and others have watched the City Council get beaten up by a small group in this community. This small group, now largely bound together as a San Dimas community post, has been nothing but biased activists furthering their own political agenda that quite frankly needs to stop. To Councilmember John Ebner, I hold you solely responsible for all this mess. You are a failure as a member of the City Council. You failed to work with the other four members of the City Council for the good of the community. Heck, you couldn't even get your own initiative passed to condemn the death of George Floyd. You know who did? The other members of the council. I hope you're proud of the embarrassment you brought to our small town. We may not call in largely because those fighting your battles take up all the time, but we are watching, and we are done. Emmett, Dennis, Ryan, and Eric, carry out the people's business. Staff, thank you for all you do, and I'm happy to see the City Council is getting this under control. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Melendez. I'm the operations director here at the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to make the audience aware of a program taking place for businesses this week in partnership with the Pomona Chamber of Commerce, as well as other neighboring chambers. We're assisting in the distribution of free PPE for local businesses in LA County through PPP Unite. This includes a thirty-day supply of masks, shields, and hand sanitizer. The pickup location will be in Pomona. For more information or to sign up, please visit the San Dimas Chamber Facebook page, or for more details, you could go ahead and reach out to the chamber at 909-592-3818. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
This is Dan Daniel, calling about the parking situation once again, hopefully for the last time, because I think we've got it mostly figured out. But a couple things. I have no problem with the residents collecting the signatures and getting 67%, and an overall count is no, because I don't think that's going to be an issue this time. Would have been nice if we'd have done it a little bit better last time, but most of you, I don't even think were here back then, so that's okay. A question, and I know you can answer it right now, but maybe at some point. Are the traffic safety meetings that are going to be talking about these permitted areas open to not only the public but the applicant? And will they be informed ahead of time so they can show up and possibly even show up in force with the whole neighborhood if they need to? And the fee for replacement, I know you guys mentioned it was going to be free. Personally, I think that's a viable idea. People will game the system, people will get extra permits, people will abuse it. It's just the nature of people. And then I will leave you with a final note. Somebody mentioned common sense being used. Common sense is not nearly as common as it used to be, and it is not common anymore at all. So thank you for your time, thank you for all the work over the years on this, guys. Thank you, Sheri. Guys, have a wonderful night.
Thank you, sir. I'm being told by the Public Works Director and the city manager that the traffic safety meetings will be open to the public.
And that a representative of the neighborhood applying would be receiving a letter to inform them as to those meetings so that he can attend.
Thank you. Any further?
Two more.
Okay.
Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
Hello, council. I'm calling in to say thank you for making an effort to acknowledge Black History Month. I think that's a nice step forward for the city. I'm interested in how, though, we're going to make a proclamation or have some statements from the City Council denouncing QAnon and the Proud Boys and the other groups that caused the issues on January 6th at our Capitol. It seems that we have some association with at least one of those groups, with at least one of our city council members who uses the slogan of QAnon on posters when they do their Trump rallies and are out in public doing that. I'd also like to make a comment about how the interaction of the city and its citizens has been limited by the vote on how we are going to be able to only call in in the beginning of the meetings. It's very disappointing that when you finally get people to include themselves in the city process, you want to eliminate them, which seems a little suspect to me. Also, the woman that called in denouncing John, I'm not sure, maybe she needs her reasoning skills checked, because the only person on that council besides Denny Bertone that actually cares about this city is John. The only thing he's guilty of is caring about the citizens, the safety of the citizens, about COVID protocol, about being able to associate with his family because he's safe and the rest of the council is safe, and reasons things out very well. So I'm not sure what this new campaign is against the newspaper that's in the city or the people that write for it, but I'm guessing that it has to do with the same thing Ryan's trying to do with interaction from people calling in. Somehow, he feels threatened by this, and this is his new campaign. There were some things on his personal site today that were addressed, and someone came up with the same thing. So now they're trying to denounce the new city newspaper that's very neutral and very well-accepted in the city. And I find it very suspect that he's trying to shut down any kind of communication in the city. That's something that the rest of the citizens of San Dimas should be very concerned about. Thank you. And I don't think anybody's going to go anywhere. These meetings are going to be well-attended, and people are still going to call in. It's just sad that you've limited things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for calling. Please state your name, and your three minutes starts now.
I just want to start by saying that I agree with the last speaker in regards to John and Dennis being outstanding councilmen. I don't agree with the speaker, Diane. And my comment is, it was concerning and disturbing that the City Council voted to remove public comment during agenda items and at the closing public comment as a solution to shorten city council meetings. There are other ways to shorten the length of meetings, including limiting agenda items and/or the types of agenda items combined on one night. It is very ironic that censoring the people of San Dimas is being used as a guide to get the people's business done. The City Council is a nonpartisan local government body where the public should be allowed to appropriately participate to help you get their business done. And I just have to say, you are continuing your complete disregard for public health and public health orders by holding the council meetings in person with yourself, with staff, and the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have any more callers, but allow us a two-minute window for our broadcast delay.
We will allow two minutes for broadcast delay. We will allow two minutes for broadcast delay.
We are now taking oral communications for those who are joining us through Zoom. If you wish to take part in oral communications and are joining us by internet device, please locate the Zoom raised hand feature and click on the hand icon. For those who dialed into Zoom, please press star nine on your phone now to raise the hand feature in Zoom. You will be identified by your screen name for internet device and the last four digits of caller ID for dialed-in participants. Participants will be called upon one at a time in the order the hand was raised. When called upon, please unmute. To unmute, from an internet device, click the microphone button at the bottom. From a phone, press star six. Mayor, we have three people.
Okay.
Participant Amanda L., it is your turn to speak. Please unmute your microphone, state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Amanda. So, I am really going to just speak about the attempting to censor the community's involvement. And I had like this whole thing that I was going to talk about, but I really want to pinpoint the fact that Mr. Daniel, who called at seven-twenty right now, actually had to call a second time about the parking, which started at five-thirty. You're only allowed to speak at the beginning. And I think the fact that he had to call a second time really indicates the policy of changing how you're doing this. So, it's not even that you're limiting how long people can speak, which is three minutes, which is the bare minimum that you legally need to allow people to speak, in California anyway. But also the fact that now you cannot, you're not allowing the community to take part in the discussion as you're going over this stuff, because we can read the agenda, although ironically, the agenda this week didn't have anything, even though there's things being discussed. So, there's no way for the community to really get back to, you know, hey, you brought up this idea, I have a question about it. There's no way for us to do that, because you've taken that away from the community to engage with their government. So, I really want everybody on the board right now, and the council, I'm sorry, to really consider the consequences of what you have done. It's not as simple as, oh, you guys are making these meetings so long, which, by the way, we will hear, you know, that is not true. Mr. Vienna, you decided to blame the community for extending the amount of time that these meetings are, and we've gone back through these meetings. That is one hundred percent false. It's false. But thanks for making us a scapegoat, and it's just, it's just kind of ridiculous. It's ridiculous at this point, that you are now silencing the community because you're not happy that they are now engaging in the government. It's become a problem for you, and you've just decided, no, we're just going to silence them, we're going to get rid of them. So, we're going to do the bare minimum we can legally do, and then the rest is just we'll ignore them. So, I guess that's it. But again, Mr. Daniel had to call again to put in the traffic safety, you know, is that going to be, you know, public? There was no way for him to ask that during the presentation in the meeting. He had to actually call in again after everything was decided by the council in order to get that question answered. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, participant Jane B. It is your turn to speak. Please unmute your microphone, state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, it's Janine Brummer. First of all, I need to apologize to Deborah. I meant to have emails submitted for public comments, so I must have sent it to the wrong email address. My apologies. Good evening, mayor, city council and staff. You know, I'm Janine Brummer. Earlier today, I sent an email to you all regarding a little experiment that I did. In case you didn't get a chance to read it, and let me give you a quick synopsis. At the last meeting, public engagement and public comments was accused of being the cause of the meetings we had. Rather than relying on my progress, that was false, I decided to review as many city council meetings as I could, being then and now. I watched the last six city council meetings that range from October twenty-seventh through the last one on January twenty-sixth, and let's just say it was a lot. Collecting and analyzing the data from these past meetings showed some interesting insights that I shared in my email. First of all, the largest portion of time was spent collectively by the five city council members, and then followed closely by city staff and presenters, not the public as it was suggested. If we drill down further into just the council members' time, we can see three council members are driving that statistic. Mayor Bader was at thirty-six percent of the total council time, which, to be fair, that increases parliamentary duties as well as his own comments. Council member Vienna, thirty-one percent. Council member Ebner, twenty percent. Council member Weber, eight percent. And council member Barton, six percent. In comparison, council member Weber spoke two times more than Weber or Barton. Council member Vienna spoke three times more than Ebner, and council member Vienna spoke three more than Ebner. I will provide some suggestions in my email, because what you really have here is the time management. It's strongly directed by Mr. Constantine and his team.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
... rather than start at the city council meeting. In conclusion, I want to reiterate that public comments are not driving force behind these long meetings. Instead, there is an internal amendment and plan order you need to address. I request you rethink the newly imposed limit of three minutes on all agenda topics upfront at the beginning of the meeting, citizen, and return to the procedure that's been working. Otherwise, the optics are that you want limited speech for resident involvement. The public's engagement is clearly not the prevailing issue here, and if I talk fast enough...
Okay.
John, this is John Ebner. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
John Lee?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
The council is muted.
John?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. John, can you hear me, John?
No, this is Sean, not John.
Oh.
But I can't hear.
You can hear me. Did you have trouble hearing, Janine?
John, John, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to try to get...
John, John, do you hear me?
I have a suggestion to make. Emmett, can you hear me?
I hear you. John, I hear you.
Emmett?
The council chamber is muted. They need to unmute.
I know. Yeah.
John, do you see me?
There you go.
John?
Yes, Emmett, and I was just was going to comment. We had trouble here, I don't know, did you guys have trouble hearing the last caller?
John, we, you, she was totally, couldn't understand anything she was going to say. I was going to comment on about that to Ms. Brummer, that we didn't truly understand much of anything she said, but I know that she sent us an email during the day. So, I would ask that the clerk enter that into the official record, and I can't tell you what she said, and I'm watching the rest of the council shake their heads.
Okay. What I would like to say is that it's possible that you might, if that happens, participants may want to turn off their cameras, because there just may be too much, they may not have enough bandwidth to get everything through. So, that may help. Secondly, the caller, and I would say this about any caller who had this trouble, especially when it was the entire time, I would say we should give the caller a second chance to say what she had to say. Now, I'm just suggesting that if we don't, that's okay, but it was incoherent because of the technical difficulties she was having, and I wasn't able to make that suggestion about the no-video option while she was talking. But for other callers, you may want to turn your video off, because that may be taking up some of the bandwidth, I'm guessing, I don't know, but that's one possibility.
All right, John, I, as the chair, will accept another call from Ms. Brummer, if she would like to call in and see if it's, if it's working any better. I have no problem with that. She can call in, and John will forward it on to us.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, next participant, Caesar C., oh, Sean C., excuse me. It's your turn to speak. Please unmute your microphone, state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, city council, members of the audience. I really enjoyed the presentation about the permit parking. Very informative, and I hope residents watching the presentation got the gist of the program and understood it. When residents of Villa Verde near the Antonovich area had petitioned for a parking permit district, it only affected the areas that residents complained about in regards to the congested parking on Antonovich Trail, from the Antonovich Trailgoers. I want to clarify to the audience, the website I referred to last meeting before I was rudely cut off, the website to read up on the California Privacy Rights Act, also known as Proposition Twenty-Four, is CAprivacy.org. That is C-A-P-R-I-V-A-C-Y.org. I also got great reception about the Recall George Gascon campaign from members of the community, a lot of former Gascon supporters coming out about his disregard toward family members of victims, his use of intimidation tactics on deputy district attorneys, and his misguided approach to public safety. We are available on Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, and Facebook. Our Facebook is almost hitting the forty K mark, so please join us there. The main website is recallgeorgegascon.com, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have any more Zoom participants, but participant Janie B., if you'd like to unmute yourself and come back on, you're more than welcome to.
Hi, I'm trying to call back in, and it's just going to voicemail. Did you hear any of that?
Yes, give us one minute, we'll...
Okay. I'll mute my computer, and I will go to the phone. Yes.
Ma'am, if you can go ahead and dial in to the phone number of nine zero nine three nine four six two zero six, we'll patch you in. Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, it's Janine again. Sorry about that. You guys should have just hung up on me and told me. I apologize, first of all, that I was all garbled, I was on my son's computer, so I don't know what's going on with it. And then I also wanted to apologize to Deborah, as I meant for my email to actually be added into the record. So, with that, good evening, mayor, city council and staff. As you guys know, earlier I sent an email to all of you regarding the little experiment that I did. And in case you did not get a chance to read it yet, and for those viewing at home, let me give you a quick synopsis. At the last meeting, public engagement and public comments was accused of being the cause of these longer meetings we have had recently. Rather than relying on my first impression that that was false, I decided to review as many city council meetings as I could between then and now. I watched the last six city council meetings that ranged from October twenty-seventh through the last one on January twenty-sixth. And let's just say it was a lot. Collecting and analyzing the data from these past meetings showed some interesting insights that I shared in my email. First of all, the largest portion of time was spent collectively by the five city council members, and then followed closely by city staff and guest presenters, not the public as it was suggested. If we drill down further into just the council members' time, we can see three council members are driving that statistic. Mayor Bader was at thirty-six percent of the total council time, which, to be fair, that also includes his parliamentary duties as well as his general comments. Council member Vienna was at thirty-one percent. Council member Ebner, twenty percent. Council member Weber, eight percent. And council member Barton was six percent. In comparison, council member Ebner spoke two times more than Weber or Barton. Vienna spoke three times more than Weber or Barton. And Vienna also spoke a third more than Ebner. I also provided some suggestions in my email, because what you really have here is a time management problem. And with that, I strongly recommend to Mr. Constantine and his team to take a closer look at the past meeting agendas, the time associated, with the intent to analyze and look for patterns. That will help determine whether or not an item should go to a public study session rather than start at the city council. In conclusion, I want to reiterate that the public comments are not the driving force behind these long meetings. Instead, there is an interim time management and planning opportunity to address. I request that you rethink the newly imposed limits to only three minutes on all agenda items upfront at the beginning of the meeting per citizen, and return to the procedure that has been working. Otherwise, the optics are that you want to limit free speech and prevent civic engagement, which is contrary to the council's encouragement for resident involvement. The public's engagement is clearly not the prevailing issue here. And I believe I talked fast enough, and I hit three minutes now. All right? Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John?
That's all the Zoom participants.
Do we need a time?
No.
I want to ask the city attorney a question. When we have a public hearing, there's no limit in the amount of people that can speak, right?
That's correct.
And no time limit for that speaker?
There's no time limit, so people...
Gentlemen, I am not hearing you speak.
Go ahead, Dennis.
There's no limit, the amount of people that can speak when we have a public hearing.
That is correct as well.
If we have three public hearings, they can speak three times then.
Gentlemen, we cannot hear you.
Okay, that's all.
You are way in the background.
John, can you hear me? John, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you, Emmett.
John, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right. Dennis, you want to try to speak up to...
That's all I'm saying, is that when there's a public hearing, there are no limits on the amount of people that can speak. And if there's three public hearings, people can speak three times. If there's five public hearings, they can speak five times.
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
All right, John, you have anything else? John, you have anything?
This, John? Oh, no, no.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items on this consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion. Move approval.
Second.
I have to recuse myself from, I think it's four E., which is the E and A for Pioneer Square, but other than that, I'm in favor.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
Point of order, mayor, I think it's a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry. Roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, prior to the roll call vote...
Oh, the resolution?
Could you please, yes.
Great. I need to read a resolution by title, further readings waived, and passage adoption. Approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One-Dash-Eight for the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one prepaid warrant register... adoption. Approve Resolution 2021-8 for the January 31st, 2021 prepaid warrant register in the amount of $209,217.53 and the February 16th, 2021 warrant register for the amount of $362,693.53. Checks 170873 and 170949. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Councilmember Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Bader?
Aye. Remembering that Councilmember Ebner recused himself from item E.
For E, yes. The approval of the consent calendar passes by 5-0 vote with the recusal of John Ebner from item 4E.
Okay, that completes the tonight's agenda. We'll move to staff and city council reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of January, the LA County Health Officer modified the order to allow outdoor dining at restaurants, wineries, and breweries with safety measures. Indoor dining is still at this time not permitted. The health order also removed the operating hour restrictions for nonessential businesses. With regards to the vaccines, FEMA has partnered with the state for a large vaccine site at Cal State LA. There will only be two sites from the federal government that were identified, and we're lucky to have one here in Los Angeles County. LA County residents 65 years and older are eligible for free COVID-19 vaccines. And to sign up for those vaccine appointments, they can reach out to on the web, publichealth.lacounty.gov. For the next three to five weeks, the focus of the vaccines will be on 65-plus-year-old individuals and the administration of second doses. The state has partnered statewide with Blue Shield to be a third-party administrator to coordinate the providers of these vaccines. Kaiser has their own program, but LA County will be able to move ahead with vaccine provider partnerships or have the state's third-party administrator move ahead with provider partnerships in the next few weeks. We've been inquiring about how we, as a city, could help facilitate those vaccines to be rolled out to our community, and so if the opportunities arises, we'll take advantage of that so we can provide ready access to our residents. Locally, the Pomona Fairplex vaccine site has an average time of about 35 minutes to go through the process. That sounds fairly reasonable for the amount of individuals that they're vaccinating. The last issue related to COVID is the issue of the moratorium on overnight parking. Staff has taken a look at other cities to determine what changes other cities have made with regards to enforcement. So I wanted to go through some of them because it plays into our decision-making. In the city of Laverne, they were enforcing since June, and they only stopped about two weeks at Christmas time. City of Pomona, over-street parking was always allowed. City of Glendale, they stopped for Christmas holidays but started enforcing since February 1st. City of Azusa, only some streets have restrictions, enforcing overnight parking restrictions since beginning of the summer. City of Covina, they stopped for the Christmas holidays, but they're enforcing since February 1st. City of West Covina, only some streets have restrictions, but they've been enforcing since October and have not stopped. City of Walnut, enforcing since June, they only stopped two weeks over Christmas. City of Diamond Bar, they stopped enforcement in April 2020 and started enforcement again January 19th of 2021. City of Duarte, they stopped for Christmas holidays, and they have been enforcing since February 1st. City of Monrovia, they stopped for Christmas holidays, and their enforcement is starting next week, February 15th. City of Claremont, they stopped for the Christmas holidays, but they started enforcing as January 3rd. And we have received calls and inquiries as to when we would start enforcing overnight parking. And so, as the city manager had previously put the moratorium in place, the direction I will be giving staff is to start implementing this, not next week, but the week after, that's Sunday at 12:01 midnight. We will provide notifications starting this week and next week via social media, code read, texts, and emails out to residents. And code enforcement will start courtesy siding vehicles all next week with warning citations, warning them that we will be implementing it the following week. We believe that's adequate notice for individuals to understand that the enforcement will be getting. So for those who want the exact date, we will be looking at enforcement starting Sunday, February 21st at 12:01 a.m. And that's all I have for the COVID update. I can go into the Gold Line if there is any questions.
Any questions?
Oh, just a question on that. I was either going to bring it up now or at the end when you request things to be put on the agenda, and it is about the oral communication or public comment policy. And I was just wondering, I was looking at last week's agenda, or two weeks ago, and the item said, discussion and direction from, in addition to the general COVID things that Chris was talking, talked about then, discussion and direction from city council regarding COVID changes to regular city council meetings. That did not indicate on that agenda, public comment changes to the policy of how the public would comment. So I'm just wondering, that was pretty general, and then we, I think the first thing that was said by the mayor, that we, public comment was taking a long time and all that. And I'm not here to dispute anything or go either way, one way or the other. I'm just wondering if I should request now or wait to the end of the meeting to reconsider the policy changes at our next city council meeting? And have it as an agenda item with a staff report of the whole nine yards so the public would be able to know what we're going to talk about.
All right, Councilmember Ebner, this is Jeff, city attorney. You can request that now. See if another council member wants to...
Okay, I'm going to request it now, and I'm just going to make, since it's, I guess, COVID-related, since the other one was COVID-related, just a comment. I, this was not, I didn't know anybody else was doing this, but I listened to the last meeting, and very briefly, we started shortly after 7:00, and it ended a little bit before 12:30 a.m. And the public spoke for 63 minutes. So the, I just want to have a discussion about how much the public comments are impacting the time and length of the meeting, and whether, whether we want to continue the new policy, and also, because we understood it was like a trial, trial run, and have a firmer idea on how long this trial will be, or adopt it permanently, or whatever we're going to do. But I just think we need to not just let it be a trial for an indefinite amount of time and bring it to the council for an actual vote. As you recall, we did not vote on anything last time.
All right, John, as you know, I believe when someone wants to make an agenda item, I will second it and go from there.
All right. Hey, thanks a lot. That's all I have for this item.
I would just say to Chris on the parking moratorium, the reason, if I recall, when we did the parking moratorium, had to do with complaints from residents regarding unintended consequences of COVID-19. They had sons, daughters home from college who were not going to be away as anticipated, and things of that nature. So I don't support re-implementing the parking at this particular juncture. I'd rather wait for school to get back into session for those families, but I understand the move. That's my only comment. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Vienna. My understanding is the moratorium was put in a place under city manager authority, I think emergency authority. I'm not one to implement those kind of changes to municipal code sections by utilizing that kind of authority. I'd rather it be the council giving that directive, and then the council deciding when to remove it. But in this case, we haven't heard complaints from our neighboring cities about that specific condition that's happening, and given how many of them are actually implementing this program, the implementation is intended to be, you know, to allow, to facilitate the sheriff's office and others to be able to better enforce and reduce the activity that they're dealing with on, you know, a public, on the public right-of-way. I mean, you can imagine having no cars, or just one car stands out compared to 50 cars down a roadway, not knowing who's a resident, what's a stolen vehicle that's been dropped off, or what's a car of interest we should be looking at. But I appreciate that and respect that.
Chris, let me ask a question. We do have some families that are in the same position that Ryan was talking about. Their kids are home from college or anything. Is there a way that they could come here and apply for a parking permit? You know, offering evidence that their kid is, you know, their child is here, home on school because he's not being able, or he or she's not being able to get to school? Is that a way, a process of doing that?
We do have a process where you can get an overnight permit. There are specific criteria. I don't, I don't know if this is actually part of that, but we can evaluate that. The one caution with that would be, similar to the conversation we were having about parking permits, a typical residential home would have two, you know, two spots inside the garage, two spots on the driveways. We're talking in a space for about four vehicles. And so the question really becomes, if we need to park on the public right-of-way, you're talking about it's a fifth or sixth vehicle that would be on the public right-of-way. And so we would have, you know, I would really have to see and evaluate it. We send our code enforcement, parking enforcement officer out to evaluate each and every case for an overnight parking permit, and we'd have to see how do we design a criteria that addresses that concern and that need where there's no other, I have no other choice, but my child has to park their car on the roadway, there's just no other choice, and I can't help it, versus, no, I choose, I want them to park on the public right-of-way because I just don't want them putting their car in the garage. So we would have to assess that, but we'll look into it.
I just would add that if you go on the downtown core, you go on West Commercial Street, there are places where you can't fit more than two vehicles, whether it's a carport or detached garage, for example. So I think there are families out there that are impacted by this and may need to seek an annual permit or something like that. I don't think they're going to be back in school in the next four weeks, and, you know, I just, that's, I'm empathetic with those folks.
What we can do is look, if the criteria does not allow for it, we can look at adding a temporary criteria during the pandemic, specific to that, so we can, are able to be, grant those permits.
I'd appreciate it if you would, because I have the same concerns as Ryan, and I've had several people call me to, you know, to mention it. The questions was, when are you going to start implementing it? And this is my problem. Okay, and I understand the four, you know, two-car garage and, you know, but this is of no fault of anybody's, that, you know, schools are closed down and there are certain things, and so the least impact on, you know, the residents, I'm more for, so.
As I said, I understand that a counterpoint to that would be that during the summer months, when students are not at school, they're, they are here, and outside of the pandemic, we didn't put a moratorium on place for, out, for on-street parking. So let me evaluate it a little bit more, because the calls that I've received have been calls to say, when are you going to start doing this? People are parking all over the place on the streets, and everybody around us is enforcing it. Why doesn't the city of San Dimas do so? And so for those calls that you're receiving, I haven't received those calls, but nothing stops us from providing a good criteria. We'll evaluate it on a case-by-case basis with our parking enforcement officer, and if there's good cause for the pandemic, we could add that criteria and allow it until the pandemic is lifted.
Okay, thank you. Gold Line update?
There's been some scheduled changes for cross-enclosures. Euclid Avenue crossing will be closed starting March 1st, running through potentially August, so we're not going to have that for the summer. This has shifted the closure of Benita Cataract further out. The new closure days have not been confirmed, but will at least be six months out from now. The Gold Line is working with the contractor to reduce the length of time that Benita Avenue will be closed, so we're hoping that that time it will be closed will be a very small window. There's a lot of activity occurring right now. On San Dimas Avenue at Commercial, a new traffic signal is almost complete. On San Dimas Avenue at Benita Avenue, installation of a new traffic signal pole, or new poles, has begun, and the intersection will be widened. At the intersection of Benita and Cataract, trees, tree removal was done this week, and I'll ask Sheri at the end of my report to be able to discuss how many trees and what the recourse is with regards to those trees. And that tree removal in the Benita median, the east and west of Cataract, has occurred. Tree removal at the northeast corner within the city's right-of-way has occurred. And that street work will be done in phases in order to maintain traffic flow and traffic movement. On Gladstone Street, east of Costco, traffic will be maintained, but the contractor is finishing some street repairs. And to wrap up that report, I'll turn it over to Sheri, our Public Works Director, to talk about trees that were removed specifically.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Sheri Garwick, Director of Public Works. For the Gold Line, there's two categories of trees that are being removed. There's trees that are being, that have been removed from the Gold Line Authority's right-of-way. There is a replacement requirement implemented by MetroLink, or Metro, that requires a two-to-one replacement. The city has asked that those replacement trees be planted within the city as, just to offset the impacts of the removal. The second category is trees that have been removed from the city right-of-way and that are city-owned. Those trees have a value that is provided by the city arborist and the, and the city's Arbor Pro program, which values all the trees based on several items, such as the height, the type of tree, the age of the tree, and the condition of the tree. This valuation for the trees that are being removed is being charged to the Gold Line Authority, and the city will use that money that it receives to plant replacement trees.
I also want to thank Councilmember Ebner, who had asked questions regarding the tree removal, and has always been an ardent supporter of increasing our urban canopy. So with that, I'll return it back to the mayor.
Thank you. I too received several calls about what happened to the trees, and Mr. McKinney, you know, informed me about the fact that that's actually where the positioning the bridge is going to go. So they're doing some pre-work for that, and thank you, Sheri, for keeping up on that. Thank you, Brad, for getting back to me so soon. Okay. Any other questions of city manager? Okay, city attorney?
No reports today, Mr. Mayor.
Super. Council members' reports on meetings attended and expense at the local agency? Hearing none. City council requests for future agenda items, comments, and updates. John?
Okay, just two things, really. One is that I want to let you know that I've, I just asked today, but, and I already got a response from Brad and Chris, that we have a meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have three members, and we are able to hold a meeting with, with those three members. We could talk about things, we can't take official actions, but I'd still like to get a feel of where those three members are, and bring whatever concerns they might have to the city council or to the city manager, and of course Brad, who's the acting Parks and Recreation Director. So that will be happening in the near future. The other thing I had was, there's a bill, another one of those housing bills, moving through the legislature, and it's about to get to the public here, or the hearing stage, where they do the hearings, and it's SB 9. So SB 9 is another insidious bill to literally destroy anything left of single-family neighborhoods if they have their way. What you can do under SB 9, as it's currently written, and there was a similar bill that got, that got bogged down, and nothing happened to it in the legislature last year, but a lot of people misunderstood what it could do. This one here could literally on an existing, single-family piece of property, can allow up to six units with no input, public hearing, challenge, appeal of any sort from the council or any members of the community. So it's in the, sort of the fine print, and what a person would have to do, they would have to divide their lot into two, which they could do without any kind of, the city saying anything about it. Those lots have to be a WAP Those lots have to be a whopping 1,200 square feet for each lot that results. If you have a 1,200-square-foot lot, at the end of that, you could put three units on it and three units on the other one that used to be the same, same piece of property. So no garage is required. There's a parking space that's required, except if you live within a half-mile of a mass transit, you know, like the Gold Line station, no parking's required whatsoever. There's no yard required. There's a four-foot setback around the massive buildings, but that's about it. And it literally, you know, this is not going to result in affordable housing. This is going to result in higher-priced housing as speculators come in and turn single-family neighborhoods into just a nightmare. They will not be, so I guess that's a little bit of editorial comment. Maybe I went a little too far there for these kind of comments. But I'm sure staff is aware of this. And I would just like to make sure that we are kept abreast of what's happening with that. And if staff feels a letter of opposition is in order, depending on how the bill goes and when a letter like that would be appropriate and most effective, then I want to make sure we speak out on this. I am in favor of upper, higher-density housing where it fits, but I am utterly opposed to taking single-family neighborhoods and turning everything into high-density housing. And with that, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, John. Dennis?
The follow-up of what John said about Senate Bill Number 9, which is Atkins, the executive board of the San Gabriel Valley Cog unanimously voted to oppose it, to inform their lobbyists to oppose it in Sacramento, and also to send all the appropriate letters. Basically, what this does is that it takes away the local city's ability to control lot splits or duplexes. So the cog has taken a position against it. The other thing I'd like to say is that I attended a meeting, virtual meeting, of the San Dimas Rotary International Club, which was very interesting. Councilmember Vienna and also our city manager also attended it. And what they did is they gave mini-grants to San Dimas teachers, teachers from San Dimas High School, Lone Hill Middle School, McKinley Canyon View School, got mini-grants. And they also talked a little bit about the Rotary. And I was amazed about how much good they do throughout the entire world in education and helping people in different lands. And it was very informative. But they gave these mini-grants to our teachers, and I thought that was very good. Go away about how to spend local money. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Eric?
I don't have anything today.
Ryan?
I just want to piggyback off of Councilmember Bertone that the San Dimas Rotary did some outstanding work awarding those mini-grants. And to the point about the impact, I think our Rotary, San Dimas Rotary, has assisted in the world's largest, I think, polio vaccination, I think was the claim. So bravo to all of them, and I appreciate everybody that attended. Chris, it was good seeing you there as well. I just wanted to address something, specifically Ms. Julie Salazar. You know, for months, there's been baseless claims, frivolous claims, slander, just nonsense, utter nonsense. And so I just, you know, this attachments to Q or whatever nonsense she was rambling about tonight. You know, I look at this San Dimas Community Post Initiative, LLC, by the way, and they subscribe, claim to subscribe to the Society of Professional Journalists Code of Ethics. What's interesting is the staff has affiliations with the University of Laverne, and I'm going to follow up in contacting them and some others, as well as the Society of Professional Journalists. Because even when you read the Code of Ethics and the bylaws, which I've read now, it's very clear that every member that is part of this has been an activist and even has affiliations and familial connections to a member of this body, which also goes against the Code of Ethics if you read them. And so it's just fascinating that there's this claim to not be biased, to not have an agenda, to call in here and burn a lot of the time. And there's coordinated, secret Facebook groups, you know, that are coordinating the responses that come here to this council meeting, to this body. And it's not very sincere. It's very disingenuous, as a matter of fact. So I'm very disappointed with some of the way these responses have gone. And I invite the community, and I know a lot of you, I get the messages, I get the phone calls, you know, where you look at these Facebook posts. And specifically, Julie, I know challenges and responds almost to every single person and has said some awful things to those people recently, to include my wife, and continues to personally attack me and specifically my wife and my family. I'm just completely blown away at just the goal of this group and anyone associated with it. So I really hope we can get back and focus on what this body is supposed to do. I look forward to the discussion about civic engagement. It's not about limiting the public's ability to comment. And so I think there's a good discussion, and I look forward to that. But I would also offer for thought that if you look back before I was elected, this never was a problem. There's some members of this body, specifically one championing this issue, who've been elected for many years, and this never was an issue. So why now? And so I look forward to having that discussion. I think it'll be fruitful. And I think as we get through what we're doing here, I think I, one, to the caller Diane and to others who are supportive of the council getting back to a structured meeting, we're doing that. And we're going to do the people's business. We're going to do it in a timely manner. We hear from you when we see you at the grocery store, we see you when we walk our dogs, we see you and we hear from you, whether you email us. So to think that because a group calls and dominates a city council meeting, that your voice isn't being heard, is just wrong. And I'll also add that I acknowledge it's not fair for those members of the public to wait until 11:30, 1:00 in the morning, perhaps, to hear an item that they are concerned about, because the city council, who are, these are the five people elected by the will of the people in this city to do the people's business, need to sit here and deliberate and come to a decision through public discourse and hear from the public when we need to hear from the public, but also be entrusted by the public to carry out the people's business. So there is a balancing act there. And I encourage those that are critical of the council's recent decision to change the format and how we had allowed for further comment, I encourage you to look back to the city council meetings pre-COVID and look at how those meetings were governed. And then I invite you to look at neighboring cities. And I think tonight, you're going to find that the city of San Dimas has offered more ability for the public to participate than you may find in some other cities, I think, by and large. And being able to attend in person, being able to email, being able to attend via Zoom, and being able to call in are a lot of options for civic engagement, a lot of ways for the public to be able to participate. And tonight, we did about 32 minutes, 32 and a half minutes, or almost 33 minutes in public comment. So I appreciate everybody's comments. I appreciate everybody that called in, and I look forward to our future meetings. And with that, I hope everybody had a great week. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Captain Schrafnia and the sheriff and Councilmember Bertone, or Mayor Bertem Bertone. And I heard John was in the chat, at least. I didn't see you on there, but I think he was at the meeting, who attended the town hall with Sheriff Villanueva. I think there was a lot of good discussion had there regarding what's going on in our community. And I also appreciate Chris attending the Chamber of Commerce Meet the City Manager event. I heard a lot of positive things, and I actually heard some people wish there was a little bit more time. So I've encouraged them to call you if they'd like to chat. With that, thank you and have a good week.
I did attend the sheriff's meeting. The pre-meeting was especially good.
John?
I had technical difficulties with the second one, but I was listening to the whole thing. I don't think I could, I could speak at that one. I did bring up Ryan, your name, as a person who suggested and was advocating days of dialogue, and talked to the sheriff about that, letting him know that I supported that. So I think we had a good meeting. I know I spoke before. I'm not going to talk about anything else, but I just, there was, it almost sounded like, Ryan may not have believed I was there for the whole meeting, but I was indeed there for the entire meeting. And the pre-meeting was especially great because we had a good dialogue. Dennis, I, Chris, and Ash were there, and Brad was there. So, and that's about that. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And I attended that meeting, and many questions were asked of the sheriff, and many questions were asked about San Dimas Station. And our captain really performed. I could see why we, why he was appointed to this position. He was very distinct, and he had the answers, and it's like he had been there 100 years. He knew exactly what to say, and I think it was very impressive, and I was very impressed, Captain Ash, and I thought you did an excellent job. The sheriff did a good job, too. But I think our captain even surpassed the sheriff.
Outshined him, huh?
Outshined him. So we've got a good captain, I think.
A captain today and a what tomorrow?
That would be captain. He's not going anywhere.
Thank you. John, and I'm sure I'll be notified, but with the night, the day that you, or the date, when the date comes up for the Parks and Rec meeting, I would appreciate you contacting me so I can make sure I can attend. Nice talking to you, John. Chris, I'm sure you'll make sure that I'm informed on the date.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I don't know how we want to do it, but I like to support John and Dennis's call for a conversation about a letter concerning Senate Bill 9. I'm not sure how you, Chris, want to address that, but I would think that the majority of this council would be supportive of a letter opposing it.
So my preference is anytime there is something that the council of governments, the League of Cities, or the council desires to consider, that it come before council, and council give direction. And so we could draft the letter, that's not a problem. But I think it's dangerous for a city manager to pick and choose what they bring forward, because not every bill is made equally. And I think it's more appropriate from the governing body to lead that direction.
Absolutely. What process do you want us to, you have to agendize it for the next meeting?
If in a meeting like this, you're giving me direction to bring it forward, then we'll bring a letter forward to raise our concerns with regards to how it will impact our community.
I support my colleagues in that.
So do we need a motion or what?
Nope. That's adequate for me.
Just wanted to address the town hall meeting with the sheriff. I just want the community to know that all five councilmen wanted to attend this meeting with the sheriff. But due to being advised by the city attorney of potential Brown Act violations, or, you know, the appearance of that, it was decided that John and Dennis would attend and that we would hear from them about whatever. But, you know, most of the community has, that's listened to it, has contacted us and talked to us about it. So, but we did not actively take participation in that meeting, simply because of the concern about a potential Brown Act violation, so.
Mayor, just as a point of clarification for the city attorney, we were permitted to listen to the meeting, correct? We just were not allowed to actively engage as a participant. Is that correct?
To prevent the perception of a Brown Act violation, it would be good to not participate, yes. And as I understand, only two councilmembers were participating in the discussion.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to adjourn into a closed session conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure at litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D21 case. Need motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moved. Good night.
Mayor, City Council members of the public, city council met tonight in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda. Staff gave a report to council and council gave direction to staff but no reportable action was taken. The meeting is now adjourned.